Every day I'll do a push mower every two weeks.
There's a lady, woman at the bottom of, uh, no, who knows that I saw her. I think she's on River, darn it. No, 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 she's on Route 10 near Vinnyo. And she's out there with a push, you know, a real mower.
I used to do it all the time, I just got sick of it.
Hey, you can use a gas mower and you'll still get plenty of exercise.
Maybe I'll buy, maybe I'll buy an electric one.
Get an electric one.
Those are really good.
Somebody was telling me she's got, um, Sterling Muffet bought a Ryobi. And she bought a Ryobi trimmer and she's really impressed with them and I'm thinking, even if the battery only lasts an hour, that's probably all I want to do at the time.
Yeah, I've got a four.
You have an excuse to stop.
And it works really well. And then, uh, Ego mower.
But you have a, you have a little postage stamp, don't you, really?
No, I guess, yes, I guess it's modest, you're right.
Well, I'm jealous, I mean mine is like,
Even so.
Half an acre on the hillside.
Yeah, mine is not on the hillside and I don't have any automatic propulsion on mine either. It's all power, but the Ego snow blower is very good and that has its own propulsion, so.
I have a friend that has Ego Zero. I get about forty-eight inches. I use it for ten minutes or so, it's not bad. I mean, it's light, but it, you know, it's a, a good mower.
Coast over the dog.
Four-foot snow blower this time in front of my John Deere.
Yeah, what's his name?
Truck that does a real beautiful job.
Well, that's a different level. That's more professional.
That throw stuff thirty feet into the woods and you don't.
Rich has probably got one of those.
The first thing we did when we moved into this house was sell the riding mower because you can't, really, you can't ride a John Deere little lawn tractor on the hillside.
No, you know, it makes you feel very, very queasy.
And we were at your seven o'clock.
So let's go ahead and start. I guess the first item on our agenda is continuation of the site plan review for the full month in Connecticut. And do we have, uh, is the item on the?
That's in the grid behind you.
Okay, terrific. So, um, you've done a nice job of putting together a lot of what we discussed in the minutes. But as I recall, we wanted to get input from the fire and police departments. And we have, I believe, a letter from the police department that indicates no, no concern. And we have a statement from Aaron Rich of the fire chief. And he's recommended that the site plan review at a minimum include completion of current recommendations from the fire marshal's office and the line fire department, as well as updating signage on the property to clearly identify from the driveway and inside the building direction to apartment units inside. As they have a clear history of being unable to locate units in the building until responders are on-site, enough to become familiar with the structure and this is dangerous. And time-sensitive calls when responders arriving at the property have not been inside numerous times. I guess that's such as when the Hannover ambulance crews are, have come. And also creating appropriate parking spaces for planned occupancy. Clear access should be maintained around the building to allow ambulance emergency vehicle traffic to the rear of the structure. And the access road should comply with an FPA fire access road requirements and leave space for apparatus to turn around. So, um, I guess, uh, the, and then I, I originally saw the fire marshal's report, but then I couldn't find it when I went back looking for it.
It's just, it's.
It's just at the bottom of that.
Yeah, just keep on going. Scroll down, scroll down. Well, if you don't say anything else about site plan, I mean, at least if it initiated this inspection and will generate, you know, some safety improvements, I think that that's a positive thing. It's a lot of little nitpits to be taken care of and it's, it's good that this was documented and that the R knows what needs to be done. Things really clear.
Is this within our purview?
Because the fire chief has, has sent it to you, I would say yes, that it is.
Yeah, so this was April eighth, is that when we got this?
Well.
I mean, it was March twenty-fifth when they first were contacted, this is.
Yeah, good boy. But he, but he, Aaron's letter is May thirtieth and then he's.
That's when it was sent to the applicant.
Right, and he's, he's, you know, doing, he's, and so June thirtieth, there's the first batch of stuff and, and then we're, you know, contracts to get that first batch of stuff done and then, and then to July, end of July for the second batch. So, I mean, it, all these things are, just need to be taken care of, they're not showstoppers. It's nothing that, um, you know, separating the pipe for the sprinkler and the wire, you know, that's not difficult. You know, fixing the stairs, it's not difficult, it just needs to be done. Cleaning junk out of the hallway just needs to be done.
So is this, is this the first time this building, I, I can't believe this would be the first time the building has been inspected.
Can I know, Lauren, could probably answer that, is, is the fire marshal inspected the building before?
Looks like he's frozen. What I'll say is that.
Sorry, what did?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
The, the fire marshal doesn't inspect it unless it's requested and, and my understanding is the town requested an inspection of the property.
Yeah, that was entered.
Yeah, well, it just, before it was a bed and breakfast and now it's an apartment building, which kind of, we knew about that kind of change in the code. And, you know, it's all for safety, so I, it just needs to be addressed. It's, and there's a timeline. And I kind of think that, you know, if we're thinking about approving, there's no way that we should be approving a unit until this stuff is addressed. And so we just say, as long as it's been addressed, then, um, then we can give the approval. I mean, it's kind of like then that's a approval.
I'd like to, can I, can I give you points here?
Sure.
We're having a lot of trouble hearing you. I don't know if your connection on your end is having issues, but you're not, your audio is not coming out.
So, first of all, the, the fire marshal's report was.
Why doesn't he take off the video and just do audio?
Yeah, you might want to try shutting down your video and, and just using audio.
All right, can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay, so first of all, the, the fire marshal was given incorrect information that doesn't reflect our property and therefore did an inspection based on it being an apartment building when it's a bed and breakfast. So, um, the report, we're in discussions with the fire marshal to have to redo it because we're bed and breakfast, that's what we are. We are bed and breakfast and we offer extended stays, that's just what we do. We're not an apartment building, never been an apartment building, we don't represent, like, nothing about it is an apartment building. So, um, the problem is the, the inspector was given misleading and untrue information. And that has caused a change in, um, in the code because rather than it being a bed and breakfast, based on the code in nineteen ninety-six, it's based on an apartment building with the code in twenty twenty-five. So you can understand that the hundreds of thousands of dollars in changes that need to occur are not appropriate because we're bed and breakfast, we're not an apartment building. So, um, right now, we're working with the fire marshal to make sure that he understands that there's been no change in use, therefore, uh, the, the inspection needs to be reevaluated because it was done with, with wrong, misleading and incorrect information. So, um, but on top of that, there's, those aren't recommendations for the fire marshal to have an inspection, those are requirements to do. So aside from the site plan review, everything in the document from the fire marshal gets done. That's how it works. You finish every single thing, you do every single item they ask you to do. It's not, those aren't recommendations, nothing's optional. So every single thing in that will be done and that doesn't have anything to do with this particular project. So I kind of feel, um, I feel like as the owner, why wasn't the inspector given the opportunity to ask me what my building is used for? Why didn't I get asked what my building is? Why was the inspector intentionally given wrong information that doesn't reflect the use that causes all of these problems? We spent thousands of dollars updating the systems, getting everything all up to, you know, we spent thousands of dollars on this alarm system, we've added sound, we've done a whole bunch of stuff to make it a bed and breakfast, you know, to keep improving and keep making it better and better and better. And then just out of nowhere, he's given this wrong information and comes back with a report that, that based on the wrong information makes sense. If you tell someone that, hey, this place advertises six-month or more leases, that sounds like an apartment building. We don't do that, we've never done that, we never will do that. So, um, I, I'd like you to say, okay, Lauren, your job is to do what is required by the fire marshal and that's your business. But this particular project, it also has been approved by the fire marshal. All the, all the fire marshal permits are there and everything gets done that has been asked, asked of the lease chief and the fire chief. If you just say, Lauren will do, will complete the items required and worked out with the, with the fire marshal. Period, that's it.
Vicky, you have a call, call back?
I don't want to get into a debate with the fire marshal about how, you know, what that person calls what's going on at your place. I mean, how many people live at your facility?
My family.
No, 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 at the, how many people hold leases at the home on the Connecticut?
Zero.
Nobody has a lease?
We have agreements with people staying extended stay at a bed and breakfast.
Well, okay, so how many people do you have agreements with?
There are sixteen rooms.
Okay, so it looks like a lot of people are kind of keeping their stuff in the hallways because they're staying there because that's their home.
No, they're not, they're, they, these are.
The stuff that, you know, in the Huggies box and, you know, those are their personal items that it's not just a suitcase with their bathing suit and, you know, whatever. I mean, they're living there and it's fine because we need housing here. But, you know, basic safety stuff, you know, that's your obligation to provide a safe space, whether you call it a bed and breakfast or an apartment house, those people need to be safe. And if there are hazards or things that are not to code, you know, you're providing a safe home for them. And, and we're, we're happy for you to be providing housing for, you know, all these people. So whether you call it one thing or another, why not have it be safe? And, um, you know, and you, it sounds like you want to follow the fire marshal's recommendations anyway. So that's, that's great. I guess what the issue is, is the timing. Now, do you have a person who wants to move into that basement unit and that's what your concern is?
Well, if this gets dragged out any longer, we're going to miss the construction season for the new septic system that, that needs to be installed. So we'll miss the entire summer, the entire winter, the entire spring and we'll be into next summer, so it'll cost me a whole year.
Well, you wouldn't want to go ahead and just have that done anyway?
It's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so no, I don't want to, I don't want to put in a septic system that I don't need if it's not going to get approved.
The one additional unit?
Currently the septic system is at max, so adding this additional unit is a fire.
Yeah, well, if, if the thing gets backed up, you're going to have a lot of unhappy people and we don't want those people not able to take showers and do their dishes and flush or not have homes. So it's everyone's benefit that that septic is up to snuff and, um, you know. So I don't think that, and, and I don't see how this one unit is going to make the difference for you for the hundred and thirty thousand dollars you need to spend. I mean, do you need to spend it anyway? And that, that's not even my business, so I don't really even want to say, but you brought that up. I, I, I just wonder what is the immediacy? I mean, looking at this, I would say, yeah, let's get the, you know, all these things done. And then, um, and then allow some, you know, get the approval.
We, we can't right now because we don't have a clear, the inspection needs to be redone because we haven't changed use. We're not an apartment building, so the inspector needs to come out and do another inspection and there'll be another list. So that's why I'm saying, whatever the outcome is from the fire marshal, it gets done because it's required for the site anyway. So that's, that's just, consider that done because that's just how it goes. So by making this approval contingent upon that, we don't know what that is yet because they haven't come back to do the inspection. And sometimes, you know, when it comes to getting in fire and smoke detector and, and alarms and all of this stuff, this stuff takes a long time and the, the approvals, the final approval from the fire marshal, it may be a year or two out by the time all of the work gets done. So if we delay having, if we delay the approval on the site plan review, which delays the septic, and, and we wait, we're waiting, you know, a year or so or however long it takes for all of the, you know, if, if this is an apartment building, if this is considered an apartment building, then like, I don't even know, like, I don't even know where the money would come from because I don't have hundreds of thousands of dollars to redo the entire thing to put it up into today's code for a totally different, like, that's just not even possible. So what I've told the fire marshal is, I said, we're bed and breakfast, that nothing has changed. Tell us what the inspection is for bed and breakfast.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're happy, our goal is safe and compliant, no matter what, period, end, end of stop, you know. That's it, that's the only thing that we want, we want safe and compliant. So we're going to do that. And how, you know, for site plan review, the site didn't change, everything is safe. We have more than enough parking, we have all of this access for all, for, for safety vehicles. We have, we've made tons and tons of improvements at the site to make all of that. The only thing we need is, is you to say, you know what, it's okay for you to turn an exercise room into a dwelling unit so I can get the septic people in who are still going to fix the one pier that's bad. Like, everything has to get going and it starts by having the approval of this habitable unit, which is in an already finished space.
Well, I personally have a hard time knowing that there's a bunch of safety issues there, allowing another person to pay good money when there's not a safe situation. And even though.
It's a safe situation, the difference is it was evaluated as, as being an unsafe situation for a apartment building, which it's not.
It doesn't matter like how they're lodging there, these are people. And, you know, if wires and pipes aren't supposed to be touching, they're not supposed to be touching. And if stairways or hallways are cluttered, they're not supposed to be cluttered. And if there's a vehicle parked so that the emergency fire people can't get in, you know, that's a problem for the existing people, not just the new person who might be moving in, so.
I understand that. And we've already, we've already made all of the immediate corrections and the other stuff just takes time. You have to get a fire alarm specialist, they have to do design, they have to do permits. There is a fire sprinkler guy, you have to get to design, you have to get permits. You know, all of this stuff just takes time. And it's all going to get done and all the easy stuff, all of this is easy safety things that we could do with, with general contractor, we've done them already. He's, he was out there the day that we got the report. The stairwells were clear, the paints were clear, the areas around the electrical were clear, the, um, everything was done, he didn't. We don't want an unsafe situation, we want a super safe situation for everyone, that's, of course we want it to be safe and compliant. We would never, you know, my family lives there, I don't want to live in a safe and compliant place.
So Lauren, it sounds like, it sounds like you need to get it straightened out with the state, how they're going to classify this, right? Whether it's an apartment or not. Because once they, if the state says, okay, it's not an apartment, then that's what you need, right? You need for them to say that.
You're, my understanding, and David can correct me if I'm wrong, you're doing a site plan review on whether it's appropriate to turn an exercise room into a habitable unit. That's your role here. It's my job to figure out and, and address all of the other things involved with the fire marshal that don't have anything to do with this unit at all. Those are, those are property-wide, I mean, you, those are property-wide, those aren't your job, which is can the exercise room get converted into a habitable unit? David, am I wrong?
I'm trying to think if there's wording in the, the site plan review that.
I'm pulling it out right now and I'm sure that this is all, all about, here we are for overall quality of life for residents and visitors, while allowing for orderly growth and development. We're supposed to control conditions dangerous to health and safety. You know, this is from our fire chief and the state fire marshal and it's all about safety. So yes, it has everything to do with the situation, you know, with site plan.
But it does seem like the state needs to decide whether they're going to look at it as an apartment or not.
Come on, folks, you know, it, yes, I, and, and the whole state thing, and, you know, our zoning doesn't really address your situation honestly. You know, we've, I think, given you a lot of latitude about like putting units in and, and, you know, so the town is, is good with you doing what you're doing, but it needs to be safe. And the state, you know, their definition of apartment is going to be different than, than the towns. So don't get the zoning and what the state fire code is, you know, confused because they're not going to be consistent. But if what they see is an apartment building and, you know, no matter what our zoning says it is, then, you know, those are the standards that you need to adhere to, we can't change that. So that's still, that's, that's.
This is the, the difference here is that the fire marshal was provided incorrect information that we did six-month and more leases, that that's what we were advertising and that's what we worked. That sounds like an apartment building, that was just wrong information. So the fire marshal did the inspection with wrong information. So he used a code which is different than the, the appropriate code. So the, there are safety issues that we're, we're obviously fixing, but the, the, all of the big things in the fire marshal inspection report are because the code is changing to the twenty twenty-five code for apartment buildings and not the nineteen ninety-six code for bed and breakfast. So it's not an unsafe, it's not in, out of compliance with, with all of the, the, the big things. I mean, we have, this thing was inspected like crazy back before, you know, back in ninety-six and then with, in the years following, so it's not an unsafe place, there's, this is not a dangerous property. I encourage you to go there and look around, this is, it's a beautiful, wonderful place to live for a traveling nurse for a few months, you know, while they're doing a stint at a hospital.
Right, I totally agree. It is, it is, but when, you know, you're not to code and, I, you know, regrettably, you know, I'm sorry that it's, it's costly and I'm sorry this is hitting you now, I really am. Because it is apparently straightforward, but it, it just, you know, I'm also very glad that we're, you know, not having a, an emergency situation down there where somebody, you know, for some reason related to some of the standards that aren't being met, is hurt or killed. So, um, you know, and I'm sorry that what you've got is something bigger than what you thought you had.
It's not, that's what I'm saying, it's not.
Well.
Well, it, it isn't.
The marshal was given, he was given wrong.
In my view, I mean, how long is your, of the resident, people who have lived there, you know, I'm sure, well, you tell me, is there anybody who's lived there more than a month?
No one's living there, they're staying here at a, at an extended stay.
I'm really sorry, but when I see the, the kinds of things that people have stored, that's their livelihood, that's their, it's not a vacation. It's not their fishing pole, it's their stuff, like what that they live with, that is their living. And, you know, so let's not argue that, I'm trying to help you actually. And I, because I want you to have your extra unit because I think what you're doing is, is appropriate and is responsive to our housing crisis. So, but I want people to be safe. So, you know, anyway, that, that's, I should stop because other people need to talk.
I'm, I'm wondering, I mean, it, it seems like this is an issue that needs to be resolved and it sounds like you've started to, um, to try to get it resolved. I don't think the construction of a, of the leach field, I don't think our permit or our lack of issuing a permit will restrict you from building a leach field.
Now, the leach field, I have already permitted the, approved the leach field.
So.
It just needs to go through the state and.
But, but I, I do agree with Vicky that I think that to increase the, the exposure of, of folks by adding another unit or, or two units or, or a unit plus another bedroom might be something we don't want to do until things have been resolved with the fire marshal's office. So Lauren, um, this is Rich from my, I want to get, just a clarification here. It sounds like you've done the easy things to satisfy the fire marshal. And then as I read that report, it's like, well, you need to have all your fire alarms tied in together and that's a, a whole significant thing, which only, which is only required because the fire marshal classed you as an apartment, not as a bed and breakfast. And so, so those are the, um, that's the constraint that you're, you're dealing with. The other constraint, um, no, that's, that's the big thing and that's where you want to talk to the fire marshal to say, you know, can, can I tell you why I think this is a B and B? That's a discussion you, he will have. I think the, the situation, the other half of the situation that I understand is if you make this game room into a bedroom, that pushes you over the permitted size of your septic system and you have to put a new septic system. And that's something that you're, you're willing to do, but only if you know that this can be permitted. I mean, if it, if for some reason the line planning board said, nah, you know, no, there's no way we can permit this, you have a completely legal, fully functioning septic system now with the number of bedrooms you have. And so you can go for a very long time with the current septic system. And so I think that's, that's the other conundrum for you that. you, before you commit to spending a bunch of dough on a new septic system, you, you want, you need the assurance that you're really gonna get, um, get the approval. I mean, I think that's the other horn of your dilemma.
Exactly. You nailed it.
But it seems like, Rich, I think if he takes care of all the issues with the state fire marshal, the chances are probably almost a hundred percent we were gonna approve it. I mean, there's nothing else that we're really looking at except this.
Sure, right. No, I mean, it's certainly true that if, if Warren could get, um, a whole new fire alarm system and a whole new integrated CO2 monitor system in place at untold thousands or, or more of dollars.
Right.
Um.
But that's up to the state.
That would be a no brainer, yes. If, if the fire marshal were complete, if the fire marshal's report were completely satisfied.
Right, and if he can convince the fire marshal that he is a bed and breakfast, then he won't have to do all that. So the truth to me, that's what he has to do.
That's right.
You know, that's what we have to, cause Aaron Rich is saying that, you know, he's recommending that we don't approve it until
Right.
what is done with the state. So it seems like the first thing he has to do is figure out where he stands with the state.
And I think, I think Warren was looking to see if there's any way that we can approve something tonight. I mean, I, and that's not sounding.
I, I go to, Lauren doesn't make breakfast for these people.
I do.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Last time you were here, you didn't. So, okay, um, that's sounding more like a bed and breakfast.
So Lauren, if you have traveling nurses who are, usually their, their time is six months. So usually they're, they're there for six months, right, the traveling nurses?
Usually thirteen or twenty-six weeks.
Yeah, then they can re-up, right? So they may stay double that. They could.
Uh, I think they have to take an, another job at a different hospital after twenty-six weeks. They tend to stay thirteen or twenty-six weeks. But I guess they could stay longer than that if they, maybe they were working for Dartmouth and then they, maybe they went and, and were working for like the rehab center over in Fairleigh or something like that.
Right, so in theory you could have people there for six months or longer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, the hotel system has a process for that where, you know, if they stay more than six months, then, um, it, they could, they don't have to pay the meals and rooms tax anymore. So we follow all the rules and do that.
Right.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure where we stand. I mean, I, I I, I, again, I'm I, I'm wanting to approve the project. I, I'm also not wanting to increase the size of the problem if resolution with the fire marshal's office is, um, you know, gonna take a prolonged period of time or, or never get completed to their satisfaction.
Yeah, but we don't wanna go against Aaron Rich either, maybe, you know, just say we're gonna, we're gonna hear what he's saying.
Right, I mean.
So.
I mean, it, it feels to me like, um, from, from what I've heard is that the septic system is already thirty-plus years old. It's, um, at or near the end of its useful life expectancy. So it's appropriate to.
That's not quite right. The septic system's less than thirty years old. Um, I'm a civil engineer. I've tested it. The leach field looks pretty good. It's got another, it's got plenty of life left in it, and there's no question I would not put in a hundred and, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar um, septic system. I wouldn't make any changes next fifteen years if I didn't have to.
So it, it seems like to me it's a risk proposition for Lauren. And if the planning board, the sense of the planning board is if the, uh, issues with the state can be worked out, we would quickly approve.
Yeah, that's what I was.
This, we would quickly approve this new unit, which would then require a larger leach field and et cetera, et cetera. So if Warren could trust us on that, you see, I mean, cause that reduces his risk. If he believes that we will approve it, and we're all standing, sitting here nodding. I don't know if we, there's anything official we can do except if there was, you know, you give contingent approval on resolving the issues with the state. Because it seems like, you know, we've got town problems that we're clear about, and then there's state problems that we don't know anything about. We, we can absorb the town problems or, or absolve, um, Lauren of those by stating clearly how we feel about it. And then it's up to Lauren to decide how he wants to deal with the state.
Right, cause he would trust us, but we also have to trust him. He's gonna take care of all the issues with the.
Which are easy to verify, which would be verified.
See, I, I.
Well, I don't have any choice, cause that's a state requirement.
Right.
So, uh, Lauren, um, you got this message about this, all of, all of these things on April eighth. Is that accurate? From the fire marshal?
I got it. You know, I think maybe, when did I get it?
It was sent, um.
Maybe two weeks ago.
Yeah, it was sent out, um.
What? So I guess I wanna know whether you knew about this at the time of the last meeting? Because we did discuss the fact that we were waiting for, uh, approval of the fire chief. Uh, and there was even mention about an inspection.
I, I can give you some of the, the timing. I, I knew that there had been an inspection prior to the last meeting. I had not seen the full results from.
You hadn't seen that.
Right, I had not seen that. It, um, I knew some of the issues Aaron had told me about them, but they were not officially in a document. This document was sent out from, and, and Dina sent the document out for Aaron on five thirty, when she, the, the date that Aaron wrote this letter. So it went out in the mail on five thirty.
After, after the meeting.
Yeah.
After the meeting.
After the meeting. So, um, then you wouldn't have received it for a few days. I believe Aaron also may have emailed the report to you. Um, but so it was at least five thirty was the, the earliest that you would have seen, um, the full report.
So you had no inkling that this report was going to be the way it is at the time you presented to us, uh, two weeks ago?
That's right. When, when it came back saying, oh, it's an apartment building, when I'm not, that totally blew me away. Um, and the, it was all based on incorrect information provided by someone other than the business owner. Just shocked me. That, that, how does that even happen?
Yep, is there, so the implication is that the, the, or at least the way I'm putting this together is that, um, there was probably some signage issues that the fire chief didn't, had had a bad experience with. Is that accurate? Um, they, they came and they couldn't tell where, where apartments were and, and what was, uh.
Yes, and, and I responded to him and I, I put together, uh, the information. I sent him a copy of the PDF of what we were gonna post and didn't, you know, didn't hear back. So I have it all ready to go. As soon as I get back, I'm gonna post it. So that, the signage issue, uh, is done. He's seen it. He's passed it on to the, to the state fire marshal. So that issue's resolved. I just need to post it.
But for some reason, the fu, the, the fire chief wanted an inspection.
Yes, he had, so I believe had some problems finding, and, uh, particular rooms.
Right, that was the signage.
And then, so he decided that, um, seeing other things, um, there's some issues he had with the fire alarms. And so he want, he initiated the inspection with the fire marshal.
Well, it's also that he wants to know where fuel is located inside and where the boilers are.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not saying.
For, for, for volumes of safety.
What I'm getting at is that it's, it's, it's actually even, it's more than the fire marshal. We have our own fire chief who has, who has issues, um, with this. And that was a stipulation, uh, in the approval that we gave, that, uh, we had to check with him. Um, that was one of the, one of the things that had to be completed in order to go forward with approval. Um, so he was sort of bound by that. Um, it's not just the, the fire marshal. It's sort of, you know, it's sort of satisfaction of, of, um, of, of, of the state. And if that means you drop back to a bread and breakfast classification, fine. Uh, but, but beyond that, our fire chief has some problems. Uh, and he'll have to decide, you know, which of those, uh, he wants to, um, uh, stand by. And, um, and then, um, and then you're gonna have to be bound to, to do those, at least to get our approval.
Um, so. Rich, I wonder if there's an opportunity here for us to make, uh, to approve this site plan review with conditions that he's satisfied. Obviously Aaron Rich, the, the line fire department as well as the state. And if, um, if Lauren can get classified as a B and B, a lot of the problems in that report go away.
That is what we did last time. What we need, what we need actually is a list. Uh, the only list we've got is apparently the wrong list in Lauren's view. Uh, but we need a list from, um, from our, our chief.
Yeah, well, he said.
And, uh, and a new list maybe from the fire marshal, but, but it, but if the chief's list is contingent, right, right the way it's, the way he writes his letter, his list is contingent on the fire marshal's list. And then, that's the problem that Lauren has here. Uh, because he thinks the fire marshal's list was, was not founded on the correct information. So, you know, it seems to me we are in the position where we again have to go to the chief and ask for a, you know, what, what exactly is he unhappy with?
Well, I think he, I think he gave that to us. I thought his note was, was clear.
No, he refers to, he pretty much refers to the list. It's a recommendation of the fire department that the site review at a minimum include completion of the current recommendation of the New Hampshire State Fire Marshal's audit. Okay? Now then he goes on to say that there are signage issues.
Yeah.
But, but his primary statement is that, that he stands by the list of the fire marshal.
Right.
And, and, and his secondary statement Lauren has already largely dealt with. So I think we're, we are stuck with this wording of this letter and, um, and we're not gonna be able to, uh, you know, you're, you're asking us to go ahead uh, when we told you we couldn't, until we had our chief, uh, sign off on this.
So I don't, I don't think that's a correct characterization. Last time we said we don't have the information from the police and from the fire department. And so we said, we want to see that. We wanna get that information before. And so we decided we will continue the meeting to this point.
Right, and we still don't. And then my, my point is we still don't. Because, because if you take into consideration Lauren's objection to this, um, then that means you have to separate, or at least ask the chief if he can separate, uh, uh, the the state fire marshal's recommendations, who are not recommendations, requirements, from his own. And if he cannot, then that's, that's a conclusion that, that we have to deal with. And if he can, and, and that's gonna be a discussion between he and the fire marshal, then.
Right, but it still comes down to the, for Lauren, the important thing is whether he can get the state fire marshal to change, change his, um.
Right.
What he looks at it as a bed and breakfast or not, cause that's gonna change everything for him, for Lauren.
Right, but I'm, I'm assuming that Lauren's gonna make a persuasive argument. Uh, that there have been no change of use and that it cannot be reclassified under those circumstances.
Well, I, I think there has been a change of use. People are living there. This is not like your, you know, transitory bed and breakfast.
So we have a Vicki, we don't have, we don't have the definition. The state, the state.
We don't have to regulate it by zoning thankfully, so people can, he can continue what he's doing and people can continue living there. Fortunately, that he's been able to slip under the zoning, but the, the, what, you know, what the fire marshal calls it is an unsafe situation for sixteen people living there, okay?
No, he makes a big deal about, right off the bat, that this, as far as I'm concerned, this is not a bed and breakfast. And this is an apartment building, and therefore this is a different, I'm holding you to a different standard.
Right.
Right.
And so whether it's called bed and breakfast.
Well, he does qualify that statement. He says, at this point, with the, with the information I have,
Yep.
I am calling it this. Lauren is saying the inf, that statement is key. He, he had the wrong information.
Yeah, well, it's like.
So, so that's, that's his.
Is it a duck or is it a goose? You know, that kind of thing. So if you got sixteen people living there, it, it, you know, and it, and it, but it, it's different than sixteen bedrooms where you have weekend guests. It's different. People are cooking there. This is where they live.
And so Vicki, but, but.
I'm not enforcing anything. I understand.
I think that's.
And I'm not, you know, I'm just listening to our fire chief and it, and what the fire marshal says. And I'm not gonna go tell the fire marshal how he wants to interpret what the use is. I'm gonna say is that the use is allowed by our zoning, and yes, there could be another unit. And that, but the safety issue is up to him. And what's required to make it safe is up to the fire marshal.
Cause I think the state, I think the state definition, it looks like is a building or portion thereof containing three or more dwelling units with independent cooking or bathroom facilities. That seems to be the, their definition of an apartment build.
So, so let's, I think we shouldn't, I mean, I, I happen to agree, Tim, that that language seems important. Um, and maybe even dispositive, but we're not qualified to say that. So I'm gonna ask the question again and see, could we give Lauren up, an approval conditional on satisfying the line fire department with the three major considerations in Aaron Rich's note? And with satisfying clearly the fire marshal to say, yes, these are the things that must be cleared up. So that the fire marshal can say to David, um, yeah, this is squared away. It's now a good situation.
Yeah, see, we, we can't do that because, um, that is called a, an approval with conditions. And we, we need to do is have another hearing and get testimony that all those things have been taken care of. It's not up to David administratively. That is something that we need to take up with. And honestly, I'm with Matt on the fact that we don't have the list. The list is in limbo because we don't know what the list is. And so, you know, that kind of nebulousness is not good for Lauren, and it's certainly not good for our decision or whatever the condition says.
It, it seems to me that you may want to, um, figure out, or talk with Lauren, how long you think it will take to get, with the fire marshal to get it resolved, and then just continue the hearing. And that way you're not denying the, the application. And then you will have the, the, the list from, the complete list from the fire marshal after that and.
Could we ask the chief to come to, I mean, fire, yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's wise.
Yeah.
Just to, but I, you know, the delay is gonna be the delay, you know? I appreciate this, the construction season, et cetera, but I don't see how we can, um, really, we, I don't see how we can make, like, an assurance. Um, I mean, Lauren, if this comes back the other way and you have to do all of this stuff on, on this list, what are you going to do then?
I'm gonna ask him what I need to do to remain a bed and breakfast.
I'm going to ask him what I need to do to remain at bed and breakfast. And if I have to take out every sink in every bedroom, I'll take out every sink in every bedroom and we'll operate it as a bed and breakfast.
You mean, that's like the kitchen sink that you'd be taking out?
Well, I encourage you to look at our site. So in the rooms, there, there is a toilet in a little room. And then there's the shower in the room. And then there's a sink in the, and the sink serves as the bathroom sink. And people can also use it to fill, you know, their, their cup ramen or whatever. So is it really a, is it an apartment? No, it is, it's a freestanding shelf with a microwave and an optional toaster oven. And people can cook in their, in their bathroom sink. So is that an apartment?
Now, you do have some kitchenette since you put in a couple of years ago.
So what I would, what I, what I will be working with the fire marshal is, is to say, tell me what I need to do to not have it be a change in use. And I'll do whatever is required to not have to, to make it, its use changed.
I mean, any number of marionettes I stated, you have a microwave and a refrigerator.
So, so I think, I, I think David's counsel is, is wise that, that we could continue the, the hearing to hear what Lauren can satisfy.
Would it be appropriate to continue it for 30 days?
You can, Lauren, how long do you think it will take you to get back with the fire marshals? I know you're, you're away for a while and not on site.
I mean, I'm a, I'm a little fish in the fire marshal's pond. I've sent him six or seven emails. David can testify to this. I, these things take a really long time. And if he comes back and says that this is an apartment building, then there's the legal process associated with saying, you know, I'm clearly not going to be an apartment building. I, you know, I can't go to the 2025 code from the 1996 different code. Like, it's just not even possible. So this thing could take years. So, and I'm not going to put in a septic system if I'm not sure that I can get it approved. So it, what I would, you know, the ideal situation for me is you say, you know what? Lauren, as a site review, we're willing to say it's appropriate in this, in this case for this exercise room to be a habitable unit. And Lauren, your responsibility, and you're going to be held accountable by the town to just make your place operational. And to be operational, you have to do what's required from the fire marshal. So like two totally different processes with different ways of enforcement. So whether this habit, this habitable unit is created has nothing to do with the fact of, or I'm compliant with the fire marshal and able to operate because I did or I didn't do the required things for the, the site in general. So I'd say, hey, in this case, give me the approval so I can put in the septic system so I can get that going, so I can work with the fire marshal over the next however long, so that we can make sure that it's compliant and operational. And David through the town has every right. If there are concerns with anything that I don't do with, with the fire marshal, then he just says, you haven't met it. Here are the terms, boom.
But the problem is what's, what's you have that unit in there that I have no?
Right, and I'd rather have the fire marshal dealing with public safety stuff than our zoning administrator who may know a little bit about it. But it's actually a state code that we're asking to be enforced, not anything local.
So I, I think, I think we have two options. One is to continue the hearing to a date that, that, you know, you think that would work for, for, for us, Lauren. Or we have the possi, we can vote on it now based on the information that we have, which is likely to receive a rejection or not approval.
Or the third option is to, as Rich was trying to suggest, approve it conditionally, which I don't think is a good idea, but that's another option. Just to put that out there. Yeah, and.
I thought that's what we already did.
No, you, you, no, we continued it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we just continued.
Because we didn't have enough information to approve it because we didn't have the fire or police input yet. So it's not been, so it's still, yeah, I mean, and, and, but we, have we deemed this to be a complete application yet?
Yes, now that the other, it was continued until that information was provided.
Have you voted that it's complete?
I have not voted that it's.
Okay, because we need to do that so that it doesn't lapse.
No, could we look at, could we look at the minutes? Because it was approved as complete last time.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Okay, but that, oh, yes.
I missed your last.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Because the site plan review regulations add, say that you have to submit your request to the fire department and police department. Doesn't require that they provide feedback. So yes, it was, you are correct, Lauren. It was deemed to be complete and then.
Okay.
But the board then decided they wanted the, the information from the police and fire.
Well, and so I'm glad that we've done that so that we can be in this still information gathering thing without a, a clock ticking. So is, Lauren, you seem to sound like the, the fire marshal is never going to respond to you. Is that what you're feeling?
No, I think he will, but it, it could be next week. It could be next month. There could be back and forth. They, you know, they have to come back and, and do an inspection. And so it could take a long time. And then, and then gets us out of the construction season. And I've got, you know, the tiny house that was approved, that can't go on because of the septic system. So it, it, it has huge business implications for me not to be able to move forward.
Well, if, didn't we already approve the tiny house?
It was, but the.
But I can't, can, I can't connect it to the septic until I have the new septic system. I'm not going to put a new septic system in if the town isn't going to approve the second unit. Because it doesn't make sense financially. I have a septic system added just for one unit, so.
So why didn't we approve the tiny house if it, the septic wasn't adequate for that?
That was a, I believe a condition of the approval that it had to, the septic had to be.
Devaluated?
Yeah.
So I mean, it, it, it's still, I still guess I don't understand that what we've been asked to do is to approve converting a space in the basement to a bedroom for his children with the possibility of it eventually being used as an additional bed and breakfast unit. So.
And there's the other bedroom too, right? So there's actually two places, two beds that are being added.
I'm not sure.
It's, it's one, it's one studio and then a bedroom that my boys sleep in, that my boys will sleep in. So what you're being asked is if, if we can take already finished space, that's classified as an exercise room and a storage room, and make it into a bedroom where my boys can sleep and a habitable unit that can be rented as a bed and breakfast unit. That's the scope for site review.
But it could be for anybody for that bedroom. It doesn't have to be for your boys. I mean, that's how we have to look at it.
So it's basically two, two, potentially two more units.
Two more beds.
Two more beds.
And, and septic system design is based on number of bedrooms, so.
So I mean, it, it, it feels to me like your decision to build or not build the septic system is, is primarily based on the need for the tiny home and other circumstances. But, and therefore I, I guess I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm not understanding why it is such a big decision or turning point based on the fire marshal's report.
Here's, here's what I need. This is the timeline for me. Number one, I need site plan review approved so that I know for sure that I have the assurance that if I spend the money to put in the septic system, I have, I can gain some money back on, I can, there's a return on that investment. If I don't have the approval from site plan review, I'm not putting in the septic, period. So I have to have your approval to put in the septic system.
In your mind, you do.
Yeah.
No, we've already, we've already said that we don't, we're not looking at the septic. David's already issued a permit. That's, that's.
Right, I have approved it and I'm waiting on the state before I issue. I've not seen the, the approval back from the state. So I have not issued a permit for the septic yet because it's not been.
But that would enable you to put the tiny house on there and you can start getting rent income from that, right?
Well, but Vicki, I mean, Lauren's made the, the financial analysis to say that it's not worth it.
Right, so he needs two units.
Or three really with the tiny house.
And one thing I will say, I will ask that if you do an approval, that you include a condition of the septic get done first.
Right, well, none of the, the occupancy should not occur for, for, yeah, for that. Or, you know, some of these sa, safety things either, so.
I, yeah, I mean, I think, I'd like to talk to Aaron Rich before we, you know, see where he stands on this.
Well, we've got a letter from him. We know where he stands through the letter.
Well, and.
I mean, you know, so, and, and I, I mean, I'm in the business of listening to our department people. Otherwise, why do we bother asking?
Well, right, so he's saying completion of the current recommendation.
Right, well, but we don't, this may be the wrong list, right? So what we need to do is figure that out. So, you know, I'll make a motion to continue this for two weeks. And hopefully Lauren can get, or till our next meeting. So Lauren can get with the fire, with the state fire marshal. He can tell the state fire marshal he needs to have a meeting and reinspection or a decision about the use and what set of codes he's using because the planning board wants to move on this. And so two weeks or whatever it means.
June 26th.
Right. So I'll make that motion just to.
I like that.
Get that moving because I don't want to deny this. And, you know, I want to keep it alive.
If we, if we need it two weeks, there's zero chance that the things that, whatever the fire marshal needs done are going to be done. So what are we gaining if we continue this?
We might have a different list. He may say, oh, you're right, you do have a bed and breakfast and therefore my list is different. And, and then we might have a list that you're happy with and that we can go ahead and, and use as a basis of our approval.
Well, and he can do quick, that's the idea. Do quickly, yeah.
But if he says, oh, it's actually an apartment, then, you know, we're back to square one. So I, I can, you know, that is, you need to work that out with him.
And Vicki, the other thing about continuation is if you get up to Wednesday, the 25th, and the, the state marshal, fire marshal is nowhere to be found or whatever, Lauren can simply talk to David and say.
Yeah, we can continue it still.
We can, we can recontinue without prejudice to him.
Yeah, well, there's no, I mean, we're, we want this open and to get that information so we can use that to make our decision. We don't have the appropriate information to make a decision right now. I mean, I was happy with what Aaron said, but now Lauren said, oh, that's all wrong. So, you know, I would have been ready to approve it based on what we had with Aaron's recommendation. But, you know, that needs to be worked out. So I made that motion.
I said.
Okay, is there any, I mean.
Do we have any?
Here's, if you're, if you're willing to go along with, with what Aaron's think, all I'm saying is the only thing, if you use the exact document that the fire marshal gave, then don't use that. But just say you're accepting Aaron's recommendation with the understanding that there may be some changes in the requirements that the fire marshal requires of Home on Connecticut.
I can't be that, babe. I've been in David's position before and it's, we need to do clear decision making for you and also for David so that the enforcement and expectations are clear. So that, that, I'm not, I'm not okay with that. So I'm going to leave, leave my motion the way it was. But if somebody wants to amend the motion to address Lauren's concerns, go ahead.
I'm fine with the motion as it's stated.
So to continue this till June 26th?
Yeah, 7:00 P.M.
Yep, yep.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion. Can we take a vote on that? Do we need to appoint an alternate?
You cannot.
Don't have a.
Because David Kahn is out and he's the select board rep. You can't appoint someone just for him.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye, as opposed, so it's unanimous. Lauren, I, I think, yeah, you, you've got a challenge ahead, but in a way it may help you by indicating that the planning board is, has continued it for another two weeks. And that may give you a little bit of leverage with the state fire marshal's office. And if you don't have any information, if you could be so kind as to let David know, what, by, what was the date?
Even the, the day before.
25th.
Yeah, the 25th. Just say that, you know, let me know you were unable to get response from the fire marshal's office and the board, then then can continue it for another two weeks or whatever works for you. If there's a different timeframe that works for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, and good luck.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. So, next item on our agenda is approval of the May 22nd minutes.
Weren't there ones before that that you?
And I think there were.
We didn't do the other ones.
Yeah, I forgot that.
The other ones before.
And I have to be honest, I'm not sure I can locate the ones.
So it's the 24, 24 minutes?
Five eight.
Of five eight.
Yeah, I just had one typo. On the, I guess it's one, two, fourth paragraph from the bottom.
Page one.
Page one, yeah. Where the, it starts, the board discussed what background information to be provided. Then I think it should just be there were concerns.
Okay.
That was just a, just, you know.
Okay, any other comments on the minutes? If not, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes as amended by Tim.
Was I at that meeting?
No.
Yeah.
Ah, you have no recall.
You like doing surgery or something, right?
Yeah.
Was that right?
And David Kahn was also not, not present. So.
And Hebe was not present.
I wasn't there. So I'm there or not there.
Oh, sorry about that. So that will happen.
Schrodinger's alternate.
Oh, right. So Hebe's out as, as present.
No, no, that was a good meeting too. I didn't miss that because we had people here that were helpful and, you know, talking about the housing, so that was good. I liked that meeting.
Yeah.
Where our graduation, I know.
Yeah, Phil Kinsler was here.
Yeah, yeah, that was good.
So we have a, a motion to accept the minutes as amended. All those in favor? Aye, as opposed? Okay, that's scary.
Who seconded?
I did.
Oh, Vicki.
So it's eight, 10.
The next seven minutes from the twice.
Yes.
And I was also.
Were you here and, here and there?
Not here. My apologies to you.
Sorry?
Try very.
That was, I was.
You were, you were very carefully making sure you didn't.
COVID adjacent virus.
Really? They said it was related to COVID?
I mean, the COVID test didn't show positive, but I had every symptom except I kept my taste. And I'm still coughing.
Wow.
So it was.
But you don't have it, that's good.
Midwest, well, you know.
It's a variant.
There's a variant out there that's not, so the tests aren't there for.
Yeah.
Nina's been having that where she.
Yeah, Dana's been having that where she's been coughing like crazy.
Midwestern virus.
Smoked all the smoke in the air too.
And that's being in the airplane.
I missed seeing Phil last time.
It was, he was very, you know.
He is very, you know, I, I've dealt with him quite a bit, so.
You know, it's, it's on YouTube here, so.
Oh, yeah, well, he's, yeah.
Yeah, he was good, yeah, so.
Yeah, I, I know.
He missed us.
I'm sure he has. I'm sure he was so happy I wasn't there.
Minutes in the twenty-second.
We're discussing the minutes in the twenty-second.
So I believe you had two important roles. I was designated as, uh, as a member, uh, for the, uh, U V S.
Right.
Cause I was absent.
Yeah.
So, uh, and then, and then, so I also needed to recuse myself for the second event, so.
Did the minutes actually reflect that?
They should.
They should.
Yeah, they should and I did not.
So we want to add that.
I mean, it's just formally, I should, I should note that I didn't recuse myself. I was sitting here around the table.
So did you have buyers for those three units? Did you have buyers for those three units?
I have buyers for one and, uh, potential for another.
I still have not had, will send the revisions. I talked to Liz last week.
I talked to him today and he's got somebody, he, he's got somebody out and so it's clear we will get them to you to, well.
And I still have heard back from the lawyers. I did send everything on.
That was to be my. Very nice question. Minor thing. So David, I.
I'm sorry, I didn't print outside. Um, I need to do it live.
What's that now?
I, I forgot to print out the minutes, so I'm doing it live on the computer. Put that right there.
That's, that's an important thing, but not that important.
Okay.
And I, I, it should be, no, no L in recused.
Oh, recused, yes.
So sometimes I do that too.
I am recused as well. I function.
Could, could you just say Rich Brown recused himself from, uh, discussions of, from item two?
Item two, from item two.
Yes, yeah. Sure. And then, that was the only comments I had. And then, just a very minor typo, page two, item two, under the first paragraph, David Kahn moved to Dean instead of.
Yep.
This seems like it's complete.
Yes.
So, um, Nat or Tim, do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
I move to accept.
Nat is seconding. And, uh, all those in favor, say aye, aye.
No abstaining because I was not in the area.
But I think a vote of three with one abstention would.
Yes, you got to start on the A.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
One. Four, right?
Yes, four.
Two. So, um, onward and upward. I feel like we could start discussion of the ten questions, but I also feel like it's, um, late, so maybe we, what, what's the, uh, sense of the board of the other members? Do we have time to start this or do we move this to the next meeting?
I'm, I'd say we were here late last time.
Okay, maybe go for another thirty to forty minutes? What's that?
I said, maybe we take a break this time.
Okay.
Well.
Well, we have. May- maybe we can talk about the process.
I made all these copies in case.
Well, I, I, I copied yours, um.
No, when I need the copy, I made them, so. I need to have them go to waste, see if you were somewhere, I need to have them go to waste.
I think I.
I have one.
I already filed.
You did, okay, well, I always do this.
Yeah, it's the same. I, the most that were circulated are.
Yeah, David says about.
Yep.
I just, I had to copy it a while back.
So Vicky, I, I have a question on your notes.
Yep, yep.
So, um, on your notes, were you basing your, um, were you basing your discussion of the three of us, uh, Tim, mine and Nat's
Yep.
on the very most recent ones that, that David had sent to you?
Uh, there were only changes on Nat's because, um, I was, I wasn't, I was using the old ones because I did it, um, you know, like last week. And, um, Nat didn't have the demographic, uh, questions then. And, um, so that the numbers are changed, but if you, my thought was, okay, I want to get information for, you know, that will answer like our, is our draft goal a reasonable one? So I tried to like key up the draft goals with the questions that we were asking. And, um, so that's how I organized it and I just figured, you know, I think every one of us, I think, had a good, you know, good questions, but some were, you know, I think everybody's responding will, doesn't want to present in the same way. And Nat had some interesting ways to, to do that and some of the preambles were longer than others, so, yes. So that, so Nat's was different. I can, now that I have his revised one, I can redo mine and have David send it out.
Cause mine was also revised.
Yes, yes.
I felt the need to come over to ten questions.
Yeah, I, I.
Mine was changed because I added some questions.
Uh, yes, but I, I, so Nat's was a PDF. And, um, so I put a copy, uh, and paste and Rich and, and, and Tim's pretty much, I just retyped.
Could I modest request, could everybody just put a date stamp on these things because I am in version hell, I'll tell you.
I put draft two on mine.
Yes.
And put your name on your homework too.
Yeah, I was going to say the same, but I had to write.
Putting current questionnaire on it doesn't help me.
Yeah, I dated mine, um.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, I did too.
Go to the head of the class, Rich.
And Vicky also did, but she didn't put her name on it.
But I was, yeah, see, I, I've, you know, I've just been in version hell since I've missed two meetings. And I'll tell you that this whole, all of this, it's a bit like punching a feather pillow with a hole in it. I, every time, you know, you get a face full of feathers and you don't leave a lasting impression. I keep going back to some basic questions that, um, I think aren't here.
Okay, well, then you should raise them.
Okay.
Um, and I thought that alternates could, uh, submit.
Yes, yes, I just, I just kept going round and round and I, I saw the stuff that you've done and I, I couldn't, I couldn't, I can't in my mind, get down to the basics of are we going to get the answers that we can.
Well, see, that, I, I like, I like Nat's intro.
Yes.
I thought that was really good, except that of course Nat, you know, his, his intro said six questions and we're probably going to have more. And it's probably going to be more than three pages. Okay, yeah, so, well, well, yeah, well, when you have the demographic ones in, we do have more and if Hebe thinks there should be more. And then I thought, you know, some of these, you know, just, I, I didn't want to rewrite them unless I thought they could be worded better.
Right, exactly.
And I tried to, to say, this is like dealing with our goal one, how many houses should we have?
Yes.
And who, and, and then who's.
I was not wanting to get into nitty gritty of any, of, any of the wording of anything. I, I felt a little bit, um, well, I thought we, we might want to collect how old people are in broad bands, like eighteen to forty-five, forty-five to sixty-five, you know, over sixty-five. So then, unless you're going to ask people, you know, do you have school-aged children? Because, you know, you can see, those are sort of the three bands of where you are in your, in your life.
Yep.
Um, and then, you know, one of the sandwich questions I think was like, are you expecting to move out in the next five years? And I thought that kind of gives you a sense of how stable the population is. You know, sort of related to how long have you lived in Lyme. I thought, um, by and large, I, I really didn't have problems with anything at all. I just thought, um, in Nat's, it would be good to anchor some more information on what a median house sales price or assessed value or, or some, some kind of scoping so people can understand where we are in line, um, how, because otherwise you're kind of like in a big cloud, how big a problem is it? If, you know, houses are two fifty, I mean, they're not, but you need to give people the information to, to make a, you know, you give them a distribution, you give them a median, you give that kind of thing. And it could be assessed value, which would be all houses or it would be sales price over the last five years or something. So. And, yeah, other than that, it was, I, I thought asking, um, add why for some, for like the median, the, um, affordable housing, why do we care about having affordable housing in town? And something to the point of having people who work here be able to live here, that kind of like teachers and just to, just trying to ground it in things that people know day to day rather than the general principles that you're laying out. Cause I thought they, they're fine otherwise. And I'd be happy to try to put those together as notes. I was, I'm just gradually getting my arms around all the information that we've collected and then all the different places that we've had information come in.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things that I think I probably am guilty of losing sight of the forest for the trees is, is coming back to our old goals thing and, and I think that you were really good in.
The only reason why I was going to ask that, yeah, yeah.
Back to.
So like, okay, so what, what questions will best help us say, are we on target with this vision for our housing future? And then that's really what I wanted to try to get back to. And then there were two of the goals that we had or visions that, you know, one about education, one about energy efficiency. And they're kind of like motherhood things, so we don't need to ask about them. So it was just, uh, you know, a couple of them and then I.
Oh, that was the other thing. When we repeatedly said they could take thirty more students, it would be useful to say how many more households that might be.
It depends.
Yeah.
But I mean, but you have general.
Maybe we've had the week's wall, says move in and there's, you know, six.
I know, but everything's a statistic.
Well, I, I, I think thirty more students and we're talking a hundred and forty-five more houses. Okay, so it was so overwhelmingly going to be met if we go full speed ahead into this. That's why I didn't bother to go there. Because it is, I mean.
Well, we, except we, we're asking if that's the right number. We aren't.
No, we're, we're, well, what I was asking was that if you knew that if you, if you topped the, if you exceeded the cap and you were going to have to expand the school.
Yep.
Then should that be part of our consideration? Should we consider that a limiting, a potentially limiting factor in how much housing we're going to encourage? And that's all I wanted to say. I didn't want to get into the nuts and bolts of it. I just wanted to know how many people are actually concerned about this? Or how many people go the other way and say, absolutely not? You know, it seems to me that there's a lot of probably people with kids that'd say, no, we shouldn't. We should exceed that, build a new school and, and everything would be fine.
Or, or I'm not.
No, it's the opposite then.
Well, maybe.
I, I can tell you, we do not want this one major.
Well, this, 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 this value statement that you put in here, we really can't put in our, in our, our question. So like this, which would not be welcome by.
Yeah, I copied that from Tim. I, I, that might not be good, but I left it in.
No, 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 it's not good, it's not.
I took that out of, I took that out of what John Guntner wanted.
Yeah, I, I understand, but that's a value judgment that, you know, he says, that's not how the, so that's why I amended some of these questions in mine. But I can redo mine so that I can, since you put yours in Word, I can now insert stuff a lot easier and then not have my, my narrative on the long side, so I can redo mine.
Others, others had asked a que, it's made the statement about thirty students without the context of the hundred and forty-five. And a hundred and forty-five wouldn't be like instant. And a lot of people who have kids in the school, you know, they're maybe planning to move in five years when their kids graduate.
I don't know, I think.
Yeah, but they sell, I mean, I sold my house to a family that had two and now they've got three kids. So, I mean, that's what you do is you, I mean, mine was a beautiful family house. I wanted children in the yard where I raised my kids.
Sure.
So.
I think it's likely if we go full speed ahead, uh, and, and, and really start to encourage, you know, make zoning changes, et cetera, that we're going to exceed.
I would be stunned if there's anything we could do that would accelerate it that much.
So, so Nat, Nat, let me, let me, I mean, I, we had a consultant come when we were talking about building at Lockline Lodge. Small units tend to have a one-sixth of a child, small, and they were sort of one or two bedroom units have one-sixth of a child, this is statewide, um, per unit. And so, um, if you, if, I don't, I, this is probably ten-year-old information, so I don't want to be, get excited. But if you're building a lot of small units, if you are, you know, to get to a hundred and forty-five units, if a lot of those are apartments, then.
Or senior housing or, you know, no.
Well, in senior housing, they have not a lot of kids.
Right.
In them.
Obviously, we have to, we always have to remember that Lyme is typical. It's, and that's really important because people are trying to get people in here to this school, so.
Our, our school is.
So, so Tim, I, I looked at that and the, so my question on the school housing was, um, I'm sorry I got this to you so late. Not everybody had a chance to read it.
When did yours get sent out?
Uh, somewhat afternoon.
Oh, okay, sorry, I guess I didn't see it.
So why is, uh, the question, the question says Lyme's school population is decreasing slowly about one student per year since twenty fifteen. The school administration states that the Lyme school can preserve educational standards with twenty to thirty more students on the existing school population of about a hundred and ninety students without increasing tax expense. Do you agree with this statement? The Lyme ordinance should favor increased housing options as long as we keep an eye on any increase in the school population.
Good question.
And, and so, you know, what, what, how do we ask that, that question? I mean, I guess that's the.
Well, I liked how it was Rich Mengy who, because I think I combined his with Nat's. And I liked how Rich Mengy had, uh, the question posed at the end of the school thing.
Question six.
Uh, no, that's not it. How does that affect your outlook on housing? I think it was the simple yes, no. Nat had yes, no, which I thought that's, that's what I.
Which one was it?
Um, Nat had this, uh, his new question ten. So there was, like, I, I, I combined Rich and Nat's on this. So should the capacity, um, yeah, I just think a simple yes, no is, is like, that will be so much easier to tabulate than use, um, the simple yes, no.
How, how, I mean.
Should the capacity of the Lyme school, limited potential for expansion at the current site be considered, it's actually limiting factors for housing development in Lyme? Yes or no?
So, a hundred, you know, so eighty percent of people will say yes, it should be a limit factor. But.
So are you going to use the first paragraph three, I'm in the whole number ten?
I forget what I put, but I combined, I combined his number ten with the yes, no response, what I think with, with Rich Mengy, so, um.
Yeah, well, so the Lyme school administration feels we could add about thirty children to the school, my place, without having to either come up with ways to accommodate these students, which would not be welcome by staff.
No, I caught, we got parenthetical cases.
Yeah, okay, right.
So, but suppose we got a clear answer, yes or no, you know, significant. What would we do with that information? How would we make decisions about changing or not changing the ordinance?
We would say, uh, capacity of the Lyme school, um, is a, something that is a deal breaker for, um, coming forward. I mean, and when we say deal breaker, we say we deny it unless you provide the money to help us with the expansion. I mean, that's what it comes down to because you're, you know, putting an undue burden on the town to accommodate your development. So that's all.
You're talking about a developer though, then?
Yes, yes.
But I don't think that that breaks the. But I don't think that that breaks the deal. I don't think you can, I don't think we don't expand, but, but I think we modulate, we modulate expansion.
Well.
What does that mean?
I think, I think what it means is, what it means is, is that when you write a master plan, you're, you're actually putting together, it's more like an essay, frankly, and you're, and you're ultimately going to translate it into, here are the pros and here are the cons.
Right.
And this is going to be a con on the list, okay? And then ultimately, you're going to take that master plan and you're going to translate it into some degree of ordinance or dimensional change, which is going to foster some degree of, of, hopefully, the desired degree of, um, housing. So I, I, I don't think it's a deal breaker. It's, it's just a, it's just a fact that needs to be out there. If we don't discuss it, somebody's going to say we were negligent. You know, we knew that you, we had a limited school capacity and we just ignored it.
Yeah, but Rich is saying, how do we use that information?
You just use it as part of the argument.
So people say they do want to limit the expansion to 30 students. You, you could, in your master plan, you have targets, like 30 students would be, you know, 60 one- and two-bedroom households or, and 15, um, single-family houses. So that would be a way to parameterize within those limits.
You're still not going to be able to target numbers.
Yeah, we can't just change.
Would you change the zoning to target?
You can't change the zoning, but you can, you can have your master plan say that these are our goals.
Right, well, and, and that, that then modifies the, like, how much growth do you feel comfortable with? I mean, you know, it's certainly, you know, and that's where we have a disconnect between the information we get there and the first question is like, you know, how much growth do you feel comfortable with?
Yeah, I have, I have a feeling, you know, I get this feeling, like, when people talk about, oh, we hate Congress, but they like their congressman. You know, it's that, I, I really like the idea of affordable housing, but, but not here. You know, I just get that feeling over and over again that, that we want, we want this.
Do you think that's a common feeling?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like.
But, yeah, we think we want affordable housing, but we don't know where to put it.
It does make sense.
We don't know where to put it and how to do it.
So.
But the other thing is that if we talk about affordable housing, somehow we have to let people know that it's not going to happen unless there's some kind of fund, grants or whatever, you know, because we're not going to, you know, there's no affordable housing going to be built in Lyme, unless it's.
It, it's just that getting into the details like that, getting to the financing details, getting into the land gift details, and that's more than we need to get into to just take the, take the temperature of the.
Well, that's right, because the plan board has nothing to do with that.
No, but if, if our master plan doesn't have to be all regulatory, it could say, you know, 67% of the respondents said that they really wanted more affordable, affordable housing in Lyme. That is a mandate for us to, you know, create the housing commission, seek donations of land and that kind of thing, not change the regulations necessarily. So that means that we've got to be proactive in a different way to get that kind of housing, because our regulations are not going to give us an affordable housing project.
How, how do you feel about, um, including some suggested zoning changes as part of the questionnaire, like?
I wish, I think we should do a different one, I think we should get our vision clear first.
Well, I mean, but, see, people don't have a vision unless they can sort of operationalize what you mean.
I don't, I, I, I think these questions are informative, and what we're trying to do is get what people's ideas are about housing, and we're not asking about zoning question.
Well, there, there was about conversions was the question in there. And there's, we have severe restrictions on conversions that they.
Yeah, yeah.
And so what I was specifically thinking of is being, um, something specific about relaxing the regulations around those.
Yeah, I, you're right, I did, I, because I modified Tim's for that one, thinking, you know, we go up to more units and to be able to build new.
Or not have the requirement that it be, you know, five years of plumbing.
Yeah, 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 well, I, I think we can take that out. If people have a vision that they want to have that many units on a lot, then, then how do we do that? We can chop out that stuff. We don't need to ask people about that.
No, I'm just, that's what I'm, I'm just trying to like mesh reality with the vision.
Right, right. Yeah, well, I, I, that question particularly, I thought was a good one to ask, you know, like, you know, what's their tolerance for having development on a lot?
Right.
More units in a building or, you know, a new building, you know, specifically is how I worded it in the question, because I think we need to get that clear.
What was that question?
It was, um, it was the one on conversions and, um, number six on.
Who's six was it?
Uh, well.
Duplexes.
I, I thought it was Nat's.
I mentioned conversions, but I didn't actually ask a specific question about it because they're already allowed. And so I didn't.
Not, not, not easy, I mean, there's challenges to conversions.
Well, only where you can put them and, um, but multi, conversions of a previous structure into multiple units are allowed.
Only if you have septic and sanitary facilities.
That's, that's something, that's something that, that we can deal with.
Absolutely, but, but that's.
But that's the reality.
No, I, I took it as a whole thing about infill housing, because I, I redid Tim's third question and said, infill housing is a way to increase density in existing neighborhoods. This creates a village or neighborhood feel by concentrating new housing in areas that are already developed. Would you support infill in the Lyme Common District by allowing up to four dwelling units on a lot? These could be four units in the existing structure, four townhouse units, each with a ground level front door, or four units in a new structure.
Right, that's exactly what Ray did, pretty much.
Right, yeah, he's got, yeah, but they, they go in.
He's got four there.
So, so that was like my way, and maybe we want to say six instead of four, but, you know, that was.
So that's the density question. That's the only question we've got that really goes straight at density.
You could ask another one about cluster housing or something.
And, and that sort of brings to mind dimensional control changes as a potential way.
It's like, how, how do, how do we get those four, six units on a lot?
So that's a, that's a good question.
The other thing, one of the, one of the things that the sandwich people did that I really liked was they say, uh, would you support a change of, you know, dimensional controls or this or that? And their choices were no, yes in some parts of town, yes everywhere in town, and unsure. And so, um, I, I expanded on that. Would you, uh, support expanding the footprint of ADUs currently 750 square feet? And then four choices, so they're in a grid.
Because I think, I think I posed Nat and I had, had that in there about ADUs.
Well, but I think there's a lot of things to ask about, reducing the lot size, minimum lot size requirements, allowing multifamily developments on larger lots, multifamily on smaller lots, uh, uh, five-unit density bonuses for some workforce housing, uh, mixed use, and again, the choices are no, some parts of town.
See, I, I guess the reason that I'm not pro that.
Yeah.
Is that for, for a large, if I've got my assessment of Lyme correct, which is that it's going to be like a 50/50 breakdown or something close to that.
Yeah.
Half the people aren't going to care about any of that, okay? What, and so the question I really want to know is, what's that breakdown? Before I get into specifics, I want to know how many people want to change anything? And, and, and I want, and, and once I've got that, then this, and, and it says, yeah, I've got a majority that want to change stuff, then this is exactly where I would go.
See, I'm going to, I'm going to say that's, that we're not going to.
But I think this is putting the cart before the horse.
I think what this is, so, I have a different take on it, that, that these kinds of questions are, what about this kind of thing? No, some places, everywhere, I don't know? And, and asking these sorts of things, these are things that people can understand, these are not, these are not wild and woolly sorts of things that are really abstruse and it's hard to understand. Would you allow, another example, construction of new office or commercial space? No, someplace, everywhere.
It seems that going, you're, you're broadening the survey.
Yes, I am, I am intentionally broadening the survey.
And then I think, trying to keep the survey, it, the, you know, this, I, you know, again, my thought was, the board's intent was to get a feel of the town's tolerance for increasing.
Surveys.
Yeah, with surveys.
I thought too.
And then, you know, that gets you to the master plan. That, those types of questions get you to.
Zoning changes.
Zoning changes, and you're not there yet.
Right.
You are only at the point of, you know, working your master plan, saying, this is what people are telling us. And then even with your recommendations, you would do more generic recommendations saying, you know, that the planning board feels changing the zoning could accommodate some of these newer feeling, that way to put it. And then your questions are 100% in line for, how, how do you want us to propose changes to the zoning to meet these goals that were expressed in the master plan? So I think you need to kind of separate master plan and zoning changes into two separate containers right now. Work on what you want, you'll get the town's opinion for the master plan, and then say, how do we go, what do you think about these ideas for making the changes so we can meet the master plan?
Okay, let me ask a question then. If we ask many of these questions, what percentage of, um, uh, houses should be single-family or accessory dwelling units at all? How, and we get real sincere, honest feedback to that kind of question? How are we going to, um, how's that going to affect how we write the master plan, first off?
Well, it gives you the, it gives the tolerance of the residents of town for each of those different types of housing. Say, in this survey, you know, in the master plan, you reference the survey saying, we learned all this information from the town, that these are the types of housing that people favor.
Right.
It, it does not, again, that can eventually translate into.
Yeah. I think there's also a training effect, that you are, if you do a good job with the first survey, you, you've educated people and you've raised the level of understanding so that the next survey can build on that. Particularly if we do a good job of writing out the results.
Because your master plan is not going to have, you're not going to have specifics in the master plan saying, we should change the ordinance this way, this way, this way, and this way.
Do you agree?
No, no, in, in the master plan, when you write the final chapter.
Right, that's right. It's not going to end up being like that.
You're going to have recommendations at the end of the chapter that say, the, based on the information we receive through our, whatever means, the board feels that the ordinance needs to change to accommodate these new.
Higher density.
Yeah, or whatever, whatever you learn.
Exactly.
We don't know that yet.
Exactly.
And then you look at those recommendations and then have that discussion, say, all right, what could be changed in the ordinance that would meet that recommendation?
So on top of, you know, educating the population about the issues, which we've been working on with public forums and all that stuff, and a well-written questionnaire that has good context for each question, if we make this process like the Survey Monkey, it really wasn't that painful the last time. We got a lot of people doing it on paper, but, you know, we managed that in one meeting. So, I mean, our tolerance for surveys may increase as well, that we would be able to put the next que, question out in the fall instead of having, or in, you know, in the spring, instead of having to wait a whole year for everything.
Yeah, 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 we shouldn't have to. I mean, the fall, the fall would be good. Um, one thing I had with Nat's, a question about sections of town that thought we needed a map, that identified those, could Survey Monkey include that?
I think you can put images in online.
Okay, you can with the free Survey Monkey. It's the one about where do you want development to go?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and you have like the East Lyme District, well, most people don't know where that is.
Yeah.
So, so we need to have a map that, you know, says where those are. And I, I like the way we did, you know, that.
So that would be on the thing we smell out.
Right, right, so, you know.
Can't we just pirate the map out of the?
Of course, yeah, but we need to include it.
Yeah, we need to make it into an image that we put into Survey.
I certainly can do a map of that with.
Colors.
Colors and.
Yeah.
Circles and arrows and a paragraph on the back of each one.
Describing each one.
So when, we were going to keep, we were going to keep, uh, the percentages of, of where new housing units should go in, because if we.
I didn't, I, 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 that was not a favorite on one of mine, but you all might have loved it, so.
I mean, my thought was, if we're going to include that, I mean, it's, it's pretty specific stuff, but if we were to include that, would it be helpful to actually indicate where the existing breakdowns are of these? I mean, I, I guess there's probably next to nothing other than single-family homes, but, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would collapse some of these categories, just.
The nice thing about the percentages is that it gives you a hierarchy. And, and the rest of the, the rest of the questions, you know, like the way Rich put his table together, doesn't give you a hierarchy.
Can you send that, buddy?
Yeah, but the only problem, I have with the percentages is that you have to come up with a hundred. I mean, I said, I, by mistake, sent it to everybody.
Right, that's why, that's why you're not reaching, you sent it to everybody.
I don't think I have. And then you put down 20, and then you end up with like 160 by the time you get to the bottom.
I will make sure you get it.
You know, it gets a little, I remember.
I'll just resend it to, for everyone.
I have a hard time doing that.
Maybe.
You know what I'm saying? Because how do you come up with a hundred when you start?
I have more faith in, in the mathematics level of the.
Well, yeah, but if you started here and said, oh, the first one, I think I need 30, and then the next one is like 20, and then, and you get down, oh, now I'm up to 150%.
Well, they can cross it out.
So then they cross it out anyway. That's my only issue with that.
Survey Monkey might let you have a calculator.
There, there are some, some query things allow you to do that, to say, oh, now you're at 110.
Yeah.
So then we'll just back them back to 100 then.
Yeah.
Anyway, I mean, I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, that's true. We can just back them back to 100. You're absolutely right.
It's called normalizing.
Right, exactly.
This one goes to 11, sorry.
Another movie.
So.
So can we take, what's, what do we have for next meeting?
Next meeting, the only thing, well, next meeting is the continuation.
More, more PCOMs, yeah.
Um, and then you're supposed to be talking about zoning ordinance changes.
Okay, and do we have any current ones that are, we're really working on?
We've been working through kind of lists of stuff. I know the Shore Lane one cropped up with the select board this week. They want to make sure that the, they're, they're going to, let me not have Rich pull the tank out until, you know, give him the board time to, um, come up with a language for a new, for that and discuss it.
A new amendment.
For the Rich Brown Amendment?
For the Rich Brown Amendment.
Yeah.
I think you have to change one letter.
And then we were talking about steep slopes too, which really.
We were talking about steep slopes, and you left that to me to try to define it, and I've got some language that I've been tweaking, not entirely happy with it.
So we've got something to talk about.
Yeah.
Okay, because, I mean, we, I'm sorry we didn't get to this, um, and waiting another month, it's like.
Well, I'm feeling much more activated about this than I, it's been really hard.
Well, you've been away, so you got to get, you know.
Well, I was going to suggest either.
I'll add my, I'll create my version.
Either Hibi creates her version, or maybe you two get together and come up with a final edit. Is that possible? Is that allowed?
Yeah, some committees can get together.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if we're going to do, really, here at your master plan. Yeah, I was just thinking if we're gonna do, really hear it during the master plan, I think we need some other questions, like how important is it to keep the rural character alive, you know, that could be.
No, 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 that's something different.
Because it says. Well.
We're talking about housing here. It's fine, we're not gonna, we're not gonna change the vision of Lime, you know.
That's already pretty much written in the, the master plan.
Nat, Nat is like.
Well, you see whether people agree with that.
He's put that in there. No, this isn't a rehaul, this is creating a housing chapter, which we don't have right now. And it's just focused on housing and we're not, you know, it's not a global, we're doing the whole thing. So, and we, and I don't think we should dilute the effort because we really need to focus on housing, get people educated and talking about it and, um, you know, we gotta get off our hands. So.
Yeah, we get a lot of good attention in the fall, so we shouldn't.
Right.
Yeah.
And how can we capture, uh, continue to get the enthusiasm that we got from Phil?
Well, I, I think what we do.
Well, Jackie's outta here.
If we have, yeah, she had two, like, but, yeah, too bad, cause her, her sister too was, you know, interested.
Right.
But why don't we send them whatever we're gonna be reviewing the next time we look at these, send it to them, we have their emails. And I say, we love your comments, if you, you know, send them to me before the meeting, you know, or please come and bring your comments. Let's just send it to them, cause I thought they, they were like kinda committed, and John Stadler too, he's, he's, you know, good, um, writer. So he's.
My friend is stuff kinda childish.
It is, it is. It's kinda moving too, the animated stuff is kinda moving, so, yeah.
So I'm gonna, did you wanna have another go or did you just wanna?
Uh, no, now that I have Nat's, I can like put it up and then, so I can lay it out as if it were a survey rather than just comment.
And, you know, I could put together some of my thoughts where on top of what you have, just, and then I'll, I can do a little research and see if you can put a map image into survey monkey.
Okay, okay, so I can, I can, I can't do this though until, um, Tuesday next week.
That's fine, but, but I, I really do feel strongly we should ask people how old they are.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'm like with the demographics, but I'm just thinking that if we're gonna ask them, please ask them at the end. So that they hopefully answered the rest of the questions, and if they decide not to do the demographic.
I have no position on that, I just feel like it, it tells you what, what life stage people are at. To go, to go with how long you've lived in Lime.
Lets you know what your target ended up being.
Well, here's the thing.
Your target population.
If, if we're gonna do that, somebody has to commit to doing the crosstagulations so that we have that, um, and I'm not interested in doing that.
Well, that's what I, I did the last time.
I'm not, okay, I don't really wanna know if young people feel differently than older people about affordable housing, so.
But you see, the nature of the affordable housing changes if you know how old they are.
You know, we're, we're gonna get whatever the housing trust wants us to have and whatever they can get funding for is really what it comes down to. I don't think it's gonna make a difference, honestly, as to, you know, their preferences. So, I mean, you know, it's, if they can get money for seniors, if they can get money for disabled, if they can get money for families.
But knowing if people are likely to have school-aged children or not is.
Any, anything we build is gonna be occupied, and we're not gonna be able to say it has to be a Lime resident. Or they're gonna fill it from somebody in the region, so.
Needless guesses.
Well, okay, fine, we can, that's so interesting, but, you know, so, it's so interesting, and I'm so glad we got the cost to have, so that's great.
Data to information, right?
Yeah, so I will get this out on Tuesday, but I'm just not able to do it.
Well, that would be great, so, so you'll do that?
Yep.
And Hebe will.
I'll do the master meld.
Yep.
She'll do a, a version on that. We have a little bit of a respite other than to look at it.
Right, no, we need fresh eyes.
After that?
Yes.
Yeah. And our next meeting is gonna be talking about zoning changes. Are we gonna put this on our agenda as well, or?
I can put it on the agenda after, you know, so if you have time to get there.
Well, will we have concrete stuff? I mean, if we're supposed to talk zoning changes, let's do that, but we need to have like concrete stuff to talk about.
Well, there's, I had sent out some lists of stuff, um, for, you know, proposed changes.
Frank's list and your list.
And my list and, um, you know, what I, you know, we, we really need to have the board make a list of what.
Right.
Things you want to work on.
And there's basically, if there's, what, how many of us are there? So David gets the buy, so if there's one, two, three, four, five, six, each of us can pick our favorite and start to work on it. So that's, I mean, the Rich Brown one is pretty much already written, we just need to change the reference really, so that can't be yours.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna argue.
I can't argue anyways.
I'm gonna argue the other changes on that, but that's.
Yeah, okay, okay, well, if.
Not, not major.
Okay, well, then you, you can work on that one and everybody else can pick a, a favorite, because, I mean, that's what we need, is dedicated thought about how we're gonna bring that problem to a solution. And, um, and then if we're advocates for our own ones, we can push it, and if everybody else says, I don't wanna work on that, that stinks or your ideas are bad. Okay, fine, so if we get down to three, who cares? You know, we've got three good zoning changes coming forward and moving down the field.
So, so David, will you resend the, the topics that are still in the air?
Sure.
Because.
The zoning.
The zoning.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Do we know where we are with the changing in minimum lot sizes that the state was talking about?
I don't think that they.
Did that go through?
No. Not yet, anyway.
I think it may.
They put that off till like January or something?
Yeah, I, we're gonna find out two more tomorrow about the others, but, yeah, I think that's somewhere.
But they did approve the building on class five roads, I think, didn't they?
Class six.
Or class six, oh, they did.
They did?
Yeah.
But that's always been allowed as long as you waive the, the town's responsibility for.
Yeah, right, cause the bill says. Right, the owner has to waive.
What?
Rights.
Yeah, yeah, so they, they have to sign a thing saying we don't expect any police or fire services.
Statewide, that's allowed, or we allow it?
State allowed. It's six seventy-four forty-one, if you look at here, then, that's what allows.
Why did they have a bill then to? Yeah, I don't understand that.
I don't know either, um, I wasn't there, you know, I don't know, but six seventy-four forty-one is what allows building on class six roads with the permission of the zoning board and or the select board depending upon how your town is set up.
You have to read it more carefully, maybe there was something else in it.
Cause I thought, I thought that wasn't allowed in Lime.
Nope, you can, there's quite a few houses on class six roads.
Really?
Yeah, well, like, like Josh Kilam, isn't that class six out there and where the Mud Turtle Pond?
Yep.
Well, that's a different one, but, um.
And Morty Bailey, is he on?
Morty Bailey, he used to come in through Strawberry Hill, right through Bedford or Orford to get to his house in Lime.
But the Orfordville Road.
David, they all signed.
It is, the houses on Orfordville Road.
The town isn't responsible.
Yep.
Townline, the old townline road goes down and is back in there.
Why, why is that?
Those bills were just so poorly written, so poorly thrown out. This is right next to Beeson, right?
Oh, you missed a house.
I have to read it again.
Throughout the pond.
Beeson, that was just a.
Oh, is it beyond Orfordville Road? Is that what you're saying, across the Orfordville Road?
Right.
So Mud Turtle Pond starts off of Pinnacle, uh, excuse me, Whipple Hill.
Whipple Hill, yes.
And then goes up, and then it goes to, to Orfordville Road.
Yep.
Right.
Where's the house that's on?
The other side.
Is it beyond?
Strawberry Hill comes here and Mud Turtle Pond goes that way. I think it, it does connect with the Orfordville Road eventually, but not.
Yeah, it does.
It's not a road, it's a path by that.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Right.
And then out beyond, um.
Yeah, where the Robinsons used to live and where Josh Kilam lives, that's class six.
Yep.
Alfred Boggs lives out there.
Yes.
So those are all, that's class six, but that doesn't look like a class six road. Is it Quintown Road, is that what they call it?
No, Quintown's in Orford.
Yeah, Quintown's way up in Orford.
About twenty-five A.
Quintown used to go from, there used to be a road you could go from Quintown to Whipple Hill. Came out where Jackie and Harry Glass used to live.
That's Mud Turtle Pond.
That's.
Yeah, but that hasn't been, about fifty years ago, I went through there with a four-wheel drive with a friend of mine. He could get through, but I don't think he can even get through any of it.
Okay, well, the road that goes on the west side of Smart Mountain, what's that called? There's a snowmobile trail that goes up there all the way to, um, where Thompsons have the big enclave off of twenty-five A.
Right, that's Quintown.
Quintown, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Quintown, isn't that Quintown though, where Robinsons used to live and where Alfred Boggs lives and where Josh Kilam lives?
I don't believe so.
No, 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 cause Quintown's only in Orford.
Well, yeah, I think it's Quint, well, tell me what the road name is.
I can't remember.
Quintown is in line, I'm saying the Quintown Road is that road that comes off of Flint Hill and goes on the west side of Smart Mountain.
Wait, you know where the Mason Pond is, right?
I don't know where Mason Pond is.
Oh, really?
I moved.
Before, I have two things, I have two more things.
Out to the parking lot.
David, hey, Bob, it's, hey, Bob.
Two minor things I wanna bring up. First of all is next week, or next meeting, the twenty-sixth, I will be here for the meeting. I will not be here the day after and the week after, so I'm gonna have to ask someone to take the minutes because I'm not gonna be here to actually get them done after the meeting. And then the second thing is, we have, uh, a property in town who the owner would like to put a second house on the property, which is done under lot size averaging, which is section five eleven D seven. I don't know when it's gonna come to the board, um, there is really no process that the board has for doing this.
Why can't they just do an ADU?
They want a full-size house.
Where is it?
It is.
Go to the zoning board, right?
Well, do, do, you have a, a method for dealing with it, right?
Well, lot size averaging creates a separate lot.
No, if you look at, that's why, this is why I want you to, guys, to read D seven.
Okay, all right.
Page is that?
Uh, seven, or thirty-nine. Um, and there's no real process for doing this, so.
No process?
No, there's no application that I know of for, um.
Wild and woolly.
Yep.
Where, where's the lot?
It is, um, for Route ten, um, what's the road across from Shoestrap? I can never.
Preston.
Preston Hill, it's that corner lot on Preston Hill and Route ten, you know the snowmobile trail that goes up there?
Yeah.
Gonna put a driveway up the snowmobile trail to the back of the lot, which is less than a thousand feet, and put a house up there, and there's also a house.
Is it Sandy Kelsey?
No, it's not Sandy Kelsey, it's just below Sandy Kelsey.
So this is part of the, well, I call it the graph property, but it's, um.
Well, Seth Downs is the owner, but he lives in, um, Mankridge, Alaska, and so I've been talking with his father.
So this is a part of the property that has the red barn and then the white.
I believe it is that property.
The one that's below the road?
Below the road.
Yeah, I believe it is. Where Ann used to live.
And, and where I can just look there.
Yeah, I, I don't know the, the history, but it's that corner lot.
And isn't theirs like?
This is the southeast corner?
A better answer.
Yes.
Okay. That's not in the commercial district, right?
Where the house is, I don't believe it is.
Isn't that where our solar, most solar gain is, is up there?
Yep.
So, aren't they doing a solar, solar farm?
Because they want a house and they can't live with a solar panel. So anyway, they are probably going to be applying to the planning board under five eleven D seven, and so I would like the board to.
Five eleven D.
Seven.
Our thinking comes down.
So right at the bottom of page thirty-nine.
Yeah, the planning board may approve more than one residential building on a lot.
I know.
You tried.
I gotta go.
Okay, so, anyway, that is where I would like the board to.
Oops, where'd we go?
And David, you're gonna, you're gonna talk to Aaron about being.